Well, I'll go ahead and keep up. I'd just like to welcome everybody here today. September 11th. I think it would be appropriate to have a moment of silence for everyone who has given up their life for the events that happened twenty over twenty years ago. Thank you. So, welcome again, and a deep gratitude to everybody for showing up today. We all are here, we're hopefully working for the same objectives, and I'm just delighted to be in the presence of you all. To my left, I have the delegation chair with me, and if it's okay with you, should we just have everyone go around and introduce themselves?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Sue Johnson, President of the Board of Education.
Delegate Joseph Pitti, Representative District Four.
Senator William Holden, Frederick County District Four.
April Montgomery, I am the Director of Repair for District Four, sitting in for April, Delegate Miller. Delegate April Miller. She registered, she hasn't been here today. Sincerely, she is still a working economist, and her appointments are scheduled months in advance, so this is an important topic for her, and I will be here taking notes for her.
Good afternoon. I'm Senator Karen Lewis Young. I represent District Three, and I sit on a committee that deals with education, energy, and the environment.
Good afternoon, everyone. Derek Schaefer, Department of City of Frederick.
Hi, everyone. I'm David Bass, Member of the Board of Education.
Good evening. Mike Gallagher, Member of the Board of Education.
Erin Simpson, I am the delegate for District Three.
And Herb, Delegate for District Three, and former boarder.
Good evening. I'm Department of Education's Staff, Baldy Wood, the Chief Officer.
Good evening. Sarah Surgo, Chief of Staff and Blueprint for the Year.
Good evening. Leslie Calabrain, Chief Financial Officer for Frederick County Schools.
Good evening. Running late. Sorry, this wasn't on my calendar until today. I'm C. Kinganair, County Council, representing District Three, and thanks for having me.
Good evening. I'm Montecaput, Captain Vice President, Representative District Four.
Good afternoon. Brad Young, County Council, I'm large, President of the Council. I did just want to note, since we have what could be a part of the council here, and this is not a member class meeting for us, we can't really participate in discussions because that would apparently do nothing.
Steve McKay, County Council, representing District Two.
Nancy Allen, Department of Education, Department of Education.
Hi, I'm Drew Lee, Department of Education.
Hi, Ben McShane. I'm Alderman from the City of Frederick, and just wanted to say thank you to our colleagues here and the staff here for welcoming us and inviting city officials, and thank you to a couple of Board of Ed members who come to some of our recent meetings in the city to discuss ways we can collaborate on some great local initiatives. I really look forward to continuing that, so thanks for including us today.
Chris Thayer, I'm the Delegate from District Three, and I sit on the Education Subcommittee of Ways and Means.
Fred Richardson, Secretary of the Board.
I'm Dean Rose, Vice President of the Board of Education, and just thrilled to see everybody here this evening. Thank you.
Cheryl Dyson, Superintendent, Department of Public Schools, Office.
Karen Yoho, Member of the Board of Education, and I tend to do the legislative things. I chair our state organization, MAB's Legislative Committee.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to kick it right back to Board Member Yoho, too. We're going to change the agenda here slightly because the Coffee Bill should only take hopefully two minutes, and so we're going to pull that one out and check that one off the list. So, it's toward the bottom there. Let's go.
Well, I also am thrilled that everybody's here. I do think we're fortunate in Frederick County, we have people that are at different levels work together much better. I hear just tragic stories from other of my board colleagues, and we just had a legislative meeting this morning, so I realize how lucky I am to live in Frederick County. Because there are a number of new people, I put the Links Funding on the agenda every year, and I just communicated with Michelle Shearer, who is a teacher at Frederick High School, who oversees, I think she's the project manager for Links, and Links is linking youth to new experiences, okay? So, I'll get those acronyms. And feel free to set up a time after September 30th to go see Frederick High and the Links program. They don't really call it program, and we all say program. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to join that with the call.
Okay. I just saw your shirt.
Yeah, no, I was going to, since Links was first, sorry about that. And so, I communicated with her, she will give me information, she said this is the eighth year of Links. In order to do that program that was started with Nancy Grass, former State Superintendent of Maryland Schools, we asked for $236,599 in funding for that program. And every year, Ms. Pellegrino looks for that when the governor's budget comes out, and says, yes, we got it. So, whoops, we are hoping once again we'll have a new budget person to deal with this year. It's always been David Brinkley from Frederick County, and it was still Mr. Brinkley last year, Secretary Brinkley last year. So, well, I just wanted to make you aware of that, again, since there are so many new folks. So, the other thing is the Coffee Bill, and I know our state delegation is well aware of this. Thank you to our delegates, and Delegate Pitti, I know he really helped shepherd this through. It passed the House unanimously. And I know, going to Senator Lewis Young, that there are a few senators have a different idea. So, we're putting it back on one more time, and so I'm just going to briefly talk about it. It's specific to a program, once again, at Frederick High. They're learning for life, teachers there have tried many different things, and they've finally settled on coffee, that their students sell coffee in the morning, and yes, other students can buy, also staff and students. And it needs two goals. It's career exploration, and also an IEP goal of interacting with same-age peers, which is not always easy for our learning-for-life students. We went to Annapolis pre-COVID, and the students were absolutely charming, and charmed the Ways and Means Committee, and then COVID. And I don't have to tell you what happened with COVID. So, we've tried to pick it up again. Now, there are some state senators that I've spoken to, one from another county, who just have a problem with minors selling coffee products to minors. So, my goal this year is if they won't do the coffee, which right now is only approved for Baltimore County, and we were trying to tag on to that, is help them, help them help the teachers find something else, because the teachers went through a litany of things that they told to the committee members when they presented, and so that's how I'm hoping we can, maybe we can work together to come up with a solution. If it's not coffee, maybe something else. So, if there are any questions or anything, we can talk later about it, and just wanted to put it on your radar.
Okay, I just want to offer some context to what happened with that bill, and obviously, Senator Holden and Senator Lewis Young, if you want to chime in, and Senator Lewis Young knows a little bit about it. So, our bill was added, they changed the language of our bill and added Baltimore County in, and the Baltimore County Senators refused to sign it. And then I had a meeting with the Vice Chair of Triple E, which is Senator Lewis Young's committee, and Senator Kagan told me to my face, don't bring that bill back, it won't pass. So, without a change in the will of that committee, I'm not going to bring that bill back. Obviously, I'm at the mercy of the delegation here, but, you know, we should have a meeting about it, but that was the candid advice I got from the Assembly. Is that right, Senator?
That is very much correct, and so Delegate Pitti came to me and said, see what you can do, and I talked to them. You've got some pretty powerful people that are against this bill. It's the Vice Chair of the Committee and the Chair of the Education Subcommittee, and I tried to talk to them, but it was like the week before signing died, when 188 people are saying, please pass my bill. They do have a problem with coffee, that's accurate. They said they made one exception, and they're not doing it again. I think it's worth trying to make the case to them. I have no problem making the case to them much earlier in session. It might be helpful for you to reach out to them as well. And I asked them, what would you pay? So, rather than try, you know, three different variations of things per se, I just asked them, what would you pay?
Okay, then, moving on, we'll go ahead and address Blueprint Funding, and I'd like to have Dr. Surgo, and our teaching staff, and Leslie Calabraino, and Dr. Dyson, go ahead and take us through that.
So, you should have in your packets two handouts. I'm going to walk you through one, and Ms. Pellegrino will walk you through the other. The first one is a color-coded, three-page document we're calling Legislative Priorities. And as we've lived with the Blueprint for the last number of years, very acutely, over the last 12 months specifically, we really think it's a great piece of legislation, and the spirit of the legislation is the right one. We have noticed some implementation challenges that we thought would be worthy of sharing with the delegation, for what it's worth, as there is the opportunity to revise some of the law, or the legal aspects of the Blueprint, without changing the overall intention and interest. And so, I just want to walk you through a couple of highlights. I'm not going to read it to you, because I know you can read it on your own. The first one is really around Pillar One, which is pre-K. And irrespective of the fact that we have facility constraints and growth challenges in Frederick County, the law currently requires that we have a percent, a partnership with private providers, where a percent of our slots are provided by our system, and a percent are provided by private providers. What we have found over the last year specifically is we have very few private providers who want to be a public partner. There's a variety of reasons why, many of them, at the end of the day, cited as a business decision, as they look at the costs incurred, and some of the inflexibility that comes with being a private provider, in terms of having to meet some of the state aspects of that. So, we are just locally and across the state, you will hear this from every Blueprint coordinator, private providers is a pain point, but we know that we continue to expand slots. We've done a great job in FCPs, we're up to 70 classrooms this year, we are meeting our targets, so we're very pleased with that, even with our space constraints. But if there was one interest that we think might help the law and the implementation would be to go from a percent public-private to a total number of slots, saying we need to really show incremental progress in increasing the number of slots available for preschool students, and continue to invest and cultivate those private partnerships. But we've just found many of them, say, from a business decision perspective, it's not, their consultants are telling them it's not a good business decision to get into the business of that. So, that's one I just wanted to highlight. Number two is really around, you know, the ability to create a diverse workforce and the career ladder, and so we are in the midst of that work, and we feel really good about the direction that we're going, but there are aspects of the career ladder that are not funded, and without asking for more money, because I think we always try to make do with what we are given and make it work, we are wondering about the opportunity to really think about not only some incentives or grant opportunities to be able to meet some of the expectations. So, one of the expectations is in the next few years, we have to develop a peer assistance and review process, which is an aspect of the overall career ladder work. That requires dedicated staff to be able to serve in those roles. The only one, there's only one county in the state, but Maryland, that currently has peer assistance and review established, that is Montgomery County. That program's been in place for over 20 years, and it's a multimillion-dollar investment. So, Blueprint doesn't provide funding to do that work, but we're expected to have the structure in place. That's just something to consider. And then the last piece that I wanted to just highlight, and then I'll kick it over to Pillar Five for Ms. Pellegrino, is around Pillar Three. We are so proud locally of our work with dual enrollment. Don't quote me on the record, but I think we have one of the highest dual enrollment, if not the highest in the state. Right? And it comes really from our model, which is unique, which is that FCC, our local community partner, they credential FCPs employees to teach these courses in the high school. Most other districts, you actually have to go on campus or access the instructors at the community college. They credential our staff to teach the courses. So, if you're a student, you can get the course in your building, it's a tremendous access point, and it's a success. But we, the funding is limited, right? And so, we want, we don't want to have any restrictions, and so a question in terms of a legislative priority is clarifying the extent to which that free tuition, right now the Blueprint says no funding, no limitations on fees, it's completely at no cost for our families, we support that, think that's a good idea, but are there any limits that we want to consider? Are we saying, you know, any course, any topic? So, everybody likes to joke, well, what if they want to take basket weaving, which is, you know, apparently a course, can we, are we going to pay for that? Are we limiting it to certain subject matters? Are we limiting it to certain times of the year? Do we want to consider, you have to take a dual enrollment course during the academic year? Can they take courses in summer and winter break? So, we're just looking for some sort of, where the edges are a little bit soft, and as you all know, when it's not stated explicitly, people elaborate in ways that sometimes are not the intention of the law. So, we just thought that those were three things that we wanted to elevate, as some places where we think some legislative adjustments may support implementation. I'm going to turn it to Leslie for Pillar Five.
Certainly. Pillar Five, of course, is the Blueprint, is your funding section, your accountability area, and the Blueprint formulas are similar in ways to the Bridge to Excellence formulas in the fact that they are based on and funded based on your September 30th enrollment from the prior year, which you certainly understand, because if we did more projected enrollments, everybody would reject that they're getting more students. But what this causes for Frederick County, particularly in the last several years, there's a chart in your packet that talks about how Maryland has, I mean, how the growth within Maryland school districts. If you look at this, it very well illustrates the issue we have here in Frederick County. Frederick County has had almost a 10% increase in students over this five-year period of time. Only four other, five other districts had it even higher, and the closest to us was 2.4%, which is Carroll County. So, Frederick County is seeing exponentially growth, and we're feeling it. So, what's happening, because our revenues are lagging, so we're not being funded for those students until the following year, there's a big lag between what we're getting in revenues and what we have to expend out for new teachers and people to be able to support the growth that we're seeing. And so, in several states, they have what is called a rapid enrollment growth adjuster. And so, what this allows you to do, if this part of the law gets added in, is it recognizes that for districts that have this rapid growth, that you would be able to get additional funding, kind of a funding in the head to help you fill that gap that you're seeing. And so, what I did is I put together a spreadsheet that's in your packet, and I apologize, I think it's kind of faint in the walls, but I'd be more happy to send out the actual Excel spreadsheet. But it basically shows two different scenarios of how you might want to think about legislation. And this is legislation that, yes, would very much help Frederick County public schools right now, but also think about five and 10 years down the road. What county is it then that's growing larger, you know, at a rapid rate? Could be Allegheny, could be Garrett, could be down on the eastern shore. So, this is something that I think is, as an entire state, that we need to think about, because this is a true expense that we are inferring, that we do not have sufficient funding for. So, we did put that in here, and wanted to stress that this concept of a rapid enrollment growth adjustment factor will be here in official in future years.
Just real quick, I didn't want to, it's good with you, but as our office is going to speak, delegation members, if you guys have questions along the way, but the number you're referring to is the 6.8 million, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that's, again, it depends on how the law is written. I just made an assumption here that it's your growth rate on rolling three-year average, and I took COVID year out, because I know that's such a crazy anomaly, and multiply that by your foundation program. That would probably have to be something you consult within conference about, how do you exactly want to calculate that amount?
But just for perspective purposes, if you were able to correct that and add another 6.8 million, that would be 6.8 million onto a $900 million budget.
That's correct, but our growth was over $10 million, just the expenses we had to incur to accept those new students coming in the next school year. And so, that's the problem, is when you have 10 and 12, $15 million of increased costs, because you're anticipating another 1,000 kids to walk through the door in August, then you need to get that funding somewhere. If you don't get it through something like this, then you're going to have to take it out on your new funding that's for other things, that's designated for other tasks, or you're going to have to work with that programs.
Go ahead, you were ready to speak, go ahead.
Okay. Some of you know this already, so I'll give the group an update on two of these issues. I already have into drafting bills that would address both the issues. One is a bill that will look at implementation issues for the Blueprint. I met with my chair today, who told me the governor may have a Blueprint Adjustment Bill, and I said, well, I'm putting mine in anyway. If the governor wants to absorb mine into his bill, that's fine, but I want to make sure the issues that have been raised by my county are heard in the hearing. So, that's into drafting, you'll all see it when it comes back. But it pretty much takes your legislative recommendations, and that's what the draft is based on. That I don't see being a local bill, because all the other jurisdictions in the state are struggling with the same issues. The other bill that is in drafting is a Funding Formula Adjustment Bill, and that bill acknowledges that some counties are growing much faster than others, and that enrollment increases significantly, and in the case of Frederick County, over 1,000 students were unfunded the past year. Delegate Wu had a bill in last year that attempted to address this. It was somewhat problematic, it didn't have a cross file, and it had a fiscal note that was roughly $160 million over a four-year period. So, that alone is a showstopper. So, what I'm trying to do with this bill is find a number that would be reasonable, but make sure that Frederick County would qualify for the criteria, which I don't think is a problem, because we're growing faster than anybody else. So, the DLS has agreed to do three fiscal note scenarios, so that we can take a look at best-case, worst-case, middle-of-the-road. You have to ask for these things in August, because if you ask in December for three fiscal note scenarios, they're not going to give it to you. So, again, we will see what comes back from drafting and the fiscal note analysis, but I promise you, there will be a bill this session that will be in both the House and the Senate, that will look at those counties with the fastest enrollment growth and propose to make an adjustment. And that, again, has to be a statewide bill, it can't be a local bill, because if we're the only ones asking for it, it won't fly.
I think we hit that. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Holden.
So, I just wanted to ask you, Dr. Surgo, when I'm looking at this, and you may not, you know, I may be asking the wrong person, so I'm going to apologize. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, is the Foundation Funding Formula, is it different than what the state uses for their funding formula?
No, that's the state aid foundation.
So, I'm just curious, because when I look, I mean, I see like, for example, you're looking at the growth of Frederick County is like 3% on average, 47, 45,000 students as of 2002, but our, the Foundation Formula was 225 million. When I look at like Howard, they've got 11,000 more students, but they're $9 million less.
These are wealth equalized, and the funding formula from the state of Maryland, the funding is calculated, and then they wealth equalize it. So, they say if you're a county that has more wealth than our county, then your locals should be contributing more, so the state's going to give you less. So, that's why you see that difference, and it does come over.
I just want to.
Yes.
And then, well, I just, I agree with what, this doesn't happen very often, but I do agree with what Senator Lewis Young said about the revenue change and how it's going to have to be a state issue. So, obviously, that's a good starting point, a good dialogue can happen from there. I did want to ask, though, a couple of things that you pointed out was, I'll just start there. Why was there only, why are they saying or being told that the partnerships with the school system in Pillar One is not a, is not a good idea? Why is that?
What is their business? They told us a variety of things, and I don't know what, feel free. Some of it has to do with the way in which funding, the funding allocation, so they have to meet the certification requirements. The standard for the public school pre-K program, without judgment, is arguably higher in terms of the credentialing and the certification and things. And so, there's a cost that they have to incur in order to get their employees to meet those, and then also have to meet our salaries, okay?
Yeah, so it's, it's a salary that's set by the school.
By our negotiated agreements, right, through the collective bargaining process. So, there's that, and then there's just the way in which sort of funding comes at, the reimbursement process, and so unfortunately, those are some of the things that, as they're weighing, you know, they have a, most of them have a direct pay model, right? They bill the parent, the parent pays them. Remember also that the pre-K expansion grant, though, is focused on income-eligible families. So, you know, right now it's prioritizing from 0 to 300% poverty, and there's going to be tiers, and so I think in many cases, private providers, that is not the group of families that they are serving or accustomed to serving historically, and so there's, without having talked to one directly, I think to some extent, there's a reluctance to engage in a funding structure where it's not a direct pay, and they're relying on MSDV to reimburse.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. And then, on the peer assistance review, what was the, you said only Montgomery County has a functioning model of this?
Yes.
For a program? What's the projected cost? I heard millions.
Well, so, it has to be, we haven't, we haven't costed yet, because now we have to write all the job descriptions and all of those pieces, but I think if I was to give you a comparative model, if I was to estimate, off the top of my head, you need at least one person in a director role to sort of oversee the implementation. And essentially, the model, because it's peer assistance, the model is designed around there being full release teachers, so you're talking about positions, 12-month positions, who are assigned a caseload of teacher that they mentor, coach, and support. So, if you were average, and I sort of gave you, if an average is one consulting teacher for every 20, if you're going to provide that job embedded coaching, no more than 20 is probably the model. We've been studying national models, so we've been looking at them across the, you know, you'd have to sort of price out likely an experienced teacher, who's, you know, they would have to interview and apply, so it's not, the teacher's on the lower end of your salary scale. So, I would estimate it would be at least a half a million dollars, and that's literally me pulling that number out just in talking to you right now, because we haven't costed yet.
And how many teachers do we have in this? That would be?
Well, it'd have to be all, it'd be available to all employees, all teachers. You'd have to look at how many new teachers you hire, so it depends, we haven't finished the design work, right? But assuming that it's automatically provided to anybody in the first three years of experience, which is their probationary period up until they achieve tenure, it's typically also provided to any teacher who doesn't meet standard to help develop them and grow them to standard. So, I would say on average, based on our, even just this year, you're looking at about maybe 500 to 600 teachers that would need that level of support.
Okay. Perfect. Then, the last thing, which is the Pillar Three.
Yes.
Dual enrollment. My son was thrilled to be able to take advantage of this, I mean, it was great out of middle town, he really enjoyed it, and it was a great benefit. But I was, I'll be honest with you, I was kind of shocked when you're like, that it's those direction or as it was given, that it's required that it be your core study program, instead of going to anything. So, that I have, that doesn't lay well with me necessarily, because it does seem like, I mean, these costs just aren't, I mean, I know it's cost neutral, I guess.
Well, no. It's paid for, we have an agreement.
No, it's paid for you guys, but I'm sorry, I didn't use the right word. So, parents.
It's free to you.
Are not paying anything, but they're getting the opportunity for these college credits. But there's a funding that's coming out, it's not cost-effective. The funding is coming out still from here to pay.
Correct, and all of the, every single school system has a memorandum of understanding with their community college around how dual enrollment is executed. We will, I will tell you, across the state, most community colleges are looking for about a 75% reimbursement rate at the cost of tuition. We've been able to keep our costs down locally, because our employees are teaching these courses in our buildings to a large extent. in our buildings to a large extent. We cannot, we can argue that the cost doesn't, not 75%, the cost isn't falling on the community college, but I would say that's what they're looking for.
So, and this, I don't know if you've done any modeling or anything, but if we're looking at the idea that we want to have these subjects that are meaningful, that are actually going to help propel them into college, have we looked at what the cost is currently versus if we did that type of modeling where it was just for classes available, see what the difference would be?
We're having made it right now to spend approximately $200,000 this year. And that's on tuition, books, and fees. And probably one of the wild cards this year will be textbooks, because it is the first year we'll pay for those. So we're not exactly sure where that will go for the fall. FCC has been a great partner with us about that, but that's anticipated right now, not too many, though.
And that's for any classes that they wish to. And then, is there a way we can look at what classes are being taken and see what it would be? That you can, I'm not asking for that now, but if you can get me that.
I think the law doesn't allow us to make that, have that kind of discretion currently.
And that's what I'm getting at, I mean.
We'd have to look at what, you're asking the distribution of courses. What are the types of courses that they're taking?
No, ma'am, I'm asking what the cost is if we just stuck it to the four classes. What would the cost be if it was just the enrollment of the four classes currently? What would the difference be between that $2 million and say the ones that are taking basket weaving that I don't necessarily see as being beneficial to the next step for their career progression or professional development, educational development?
Yeah, I think we'd have to reach agreement on what we would define as those four courses, because I think the larger conversation is that, what the research has shown is that any child who has access to a college-level course, that supports their overall self-concept and their likelihood of going to college and succeeding in the courses there. So I think we just would have to be mindful of deciding what is a worthwhile or not worthwhile pursuit, because sometimes a course that might not traditionally be a core course, we call those access courses, for a long time, I'm dating myself. When I was in high school, it was, it was AP Psychology. I was considered the, you know, the easiest of the AP courses to start with. And so there is value in creating sort of a wide, casting a wide net in terms of what we allow, just to continue to encourage access and opportunity for students who may not necessarily see themselves as a dual-enrolled English student or master. So we just have to come up with something.
Okay, thank you.
As we look to try to write legislation to make an adjustment here, I have three options. One is to just put a certain dollar amount stipulation up to a certain amount. Option two is to have a model, similar to what many employers have that say, you know, we'll give you tuition reimbursement, however you need to meet, the courses need to meet this criteria. But option three could be a combination of both, that there are certain restrictions about what kind of courses you take relative to what you're pursuing or what your remedial needs are, up to a certain amount. So which of those three options do you think would be?
Well, I would add one little asterisk to it, as I'm thinking about what you both would share. One other aspect of the blueprint for pillar three is that every student must have a career, have a path. And so perhaps it is the ability to show evidence that what you've selected is aligned with your current path. Right? Because I think that then you, you know, I would never want to restrict a student from taking a course that is part of their CTE or CCR pathway. And that can be different for different students. So I wonder if sort of the cap is the cap as it relates to, and if you have to demonstrate evidence that it's part of your plan versus you're just filling in with something. And then, in that same way, if a student chooses to take a particular course as part of their pathway during winter break or in the summer, you know, right now, we're able to say no to that. Is that the intent of the legislation? And again, if we say no to it, it's because we aren't able to provide that course, because our teachers aren't teaching in the summer. They would have to take that course, and then it's, it's an on-campus option, which is at a higher rate of reimbursement.
Dr. Sergo, if you could, I know quite a few did, how many students graduated this past spring with their high school degree in there?
Well, so early college, I want to say it was actually about 20. And the number is lower just because of the demand, it is not because that's the level of interest. That's the level in which FCC has been able to meet some of the demands. We are actually talking about how we can expand early college. I think that's the numbers that jump out.
I think it's like 20 in each cohort.
Yeah, in each cohort, yes.
Right now, we have 40.
Correct.
That's why I say we, I mean.
But I think there's collective interest in it. That number, I think, would be much higher, is the point of which I'm sharing. But there's a, there is a require, early college specifically, where they graduate with a high school diploma and their AA degree, there is a capacity challenge there.
So one thing I was just going to say, I mean, I'm not sending the other members up, chime in on it. But I appreciate Senator Fulton's kind of substantive review of a specific area, because at the macro level, implementing the blueprint is going to cost us a tiny lot of money. And I know the CDC is not here today, but you know, the way things are shaping up, that burden is going to be carried by certain entities in this county, because it's somewhat of an unfunded mandate. And what I would appreciate is going forward, you see some of these red flags coming up, you know, you let the delegation know. I don't want to hear about it two years from now when everybody's broke, and then we have to figure out how to, you know, back pay things. So I think it would be better to have this conversation about what can we do now to get ahead of this? Because it's, it's coming. And a lot of, you know, you see the county executive in Montgomery County raising the alarm bells. I mean, there's a lot of concerned people out there that, you know, we have a very stressed budget as it is. We have even got into the capital funding for the next discussion, but this program alone is going to be very expensive. And it's not paid for. So it's a conversation for another day, but at least keep us abreast about things that you're doing to kind of counteract it, like, like what the senator said about it. There's things we can do to reduce costs between then and now, that would be a good idea to do.
And can I just, well, and I'd like to just, maybe you talk about apprenticeships, but I think that I would like you to just take a minute to address that, because we have capacity, like space capacity issues with that program. Like, we're turning away almost 50% of the students that want to get into programs. We can't physically accommodate that.
In terms of CCC?
Yeah. And then we have a mandate for 45% of our students having some kind of credential. Can you just speak to that, just so that everybody who's in the room can hear that?
Can I interrupt you just for a second, because we've got a note from Jeremy upstairs. This meeting is not live, so we're taping it. And we're, we only have one mic, and I know it's uncomfortable to keep passing it around. If you're going to speak, project.
Okay. I've never been able to be louder, but I'm going to.
It's not picking us all up, so thank you.
So one of the, I think one of the assets about pillar three is that it really equalizes both the idea of going to, of going to college and pursuing a career or technical education and apprenticeships, being the primary example of that. And we have an outstanding partnership. We have an MOU with Workforce Development Services and with Frederick Community College, with our career counselors. That's a wonderful aspect of the blueprint. They've done a fantastic job. I think we were first in the state finalized that MOU and launched that program. We're fully staffed, we have 22 career counselors. Those career counselors talk with our middle and high school students about these options. And the challenge is essentially, we have a waitlist for CTC. So we, huh?
A long.
A long waitlist. And so we have sort of the blueprint encouraging us and driving us to expand these programs. And again, a limitation from just a plain facilities perspective. And I think as we, as Dr. Lebo will get in talking about capital funding, we have an interest at the school system level, I think with the board, in opening up another opportunity to expand our career in tech ed and have places for people to go to get their credentials. I've had a request, I've been talking with one of the folks over at the county government, that some folks from the Ways and Means Committee would actually like to come over, and we plan to take them to see CTC, because it's tremendously wonderful what's happening. But we are limited just from a space perspective. Just really quick, I had a couple of clarifying things. Delegate Wu that Senator Liu Sheng mentioned is Delegate Chow Wu, former board member from Howard County, so he is on the Ways and Means Committee. DLS was brought up, that is Department of Legislative Services, in case a couple of people might not have been familiar with that. And Anna Runcle today said at our legislative meeting with NAB, they are projected to be the fastest-growing in the next 10 years. So this does affect more people around this.
Okay, capital funding, Dr. Lebo.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening about capital funding and needs of FCPS. In your packet, you have two documents. One is a copy of our draft FY '25 capital budget at both the county and state level, our current project status, and then our projected versus actual enrollment projection comparisons. So want to talk through for a minute our great need in FCPS. And really, we think we're at a critical point where we have an extremely aging infrastructure. Our deferred maintenance, and if you're interested, you can hear our experts from our maintenance and operations team present to our Board of Education on Wednesday night for approval our capital maintenance plan. But we have a deferred maintenance backlog of over $500 million. On top of that, the rapid growth that we've talked about with roughly 10% increase over the last 10 years. And so we have to balance both our enrollment, excuse me, our capacity needs with replacing our aging infrastructure. As you can see on the draft capital budget, and the reason it's still in draft, the submissions, the way the submission process works is we will submit our final number to the state in October. So numbers will still need modified slightly based on revisions to the state's cost per square foot formula that is used. And then we true up all of our allocations with the county roughly within November timeframe as well, which is why we don't have a final one. But what I wanted to highlight there, in red letters at the bottom in particular, is what we believe to be our, the difference in what we have asked for in our draft and what we anticipate receiving from the state in their initial allocation letter to us, which came out at the end of August. So the end of August, the calculation from the state is based on a state funding formula of $280 million, which means Frederick County would see that roughly 17.8. That allocation includes not only our base formula, like every LEA receives, but also a portion of funding related to EGRC, which is the Enrollment Growth Relocatable Classrooms Fund, which FCPS is eligible for as well this year. So it would anticipate that our base allocation is roughly $15 million, and our EGRC allocation is roughly $2.7 million for what that would be. And I don't, I want to be transparent in that, in last year, our total allocation, which was based on a state's funding of almost $480 million, FCPS did receive $41 million, which has been a huge help. But what we wanted to highlight is, part of the interagency commission on school constructions base formulas are based on what they believe to be outlined in the legislation. So that's why we revert back sort of every year to this $280 million mark. And if I could highlight for the delegation, a couple of commissions that were started by the delegate or by the House of Delegates, in particular, at the time, Delegate McIntosh, where the work group on the assessment and funding of school facilities two years ago recommended a minimum of $400 million annually for state construction. And honestly, that was based on two-year-old data at the time. And so we've seen the inflationary increases over the years, there's no escaping. So $400 million, even if we were meeting that over the last few years, in the future, still isn't enough to meet the demands across the state. And so these are real numbers, these are our needs. We know on the list what has been allocated and approved thus far from the state is through the Little Town Placated Project. And so everything below there has not received local planning or any funding from the state. So that's really where the start of our ask is this year. We really need local planning approval and some dollar allocations to those projects. And if I could highlight just a couple of them, because I think it speaks to really our need, the New East Frederick Area Elementary School. We are working through and anticipate having a conversation with our board at the end of September on a site to be able to support that. But I will tell you that that school, even if we built it tomorrow, will not need our needs over the next five years. We will need yet another elementary school in the eastern portion of the county. As a couple of examples, we have Green Valley Elementary School, which again, we're thankful that that project is moving forward and is in design, is operated at 170% capacity. Oakdale Elementary, while the percentage is not quite as high as at 100, roughly 160%, but what I can share with you about Oakdale Elementary is it has a enrollment larger than every middle school in the county. It has an enrollment higher than three of our high schools, and it's just on the verge of reaching a fourth high school. So over 1,100 elementary students in that eastern portion of the county. Its neighbor school just to the east, Spring Ridge, is just shy of 100%, but that is entirely fed by the REN property off of Monocacy Boulevard. And so those roughly 1,000 homes that you see up on rather, rather quickly will feed 100% into Spring Ridge Elementary School and ultimately Governor Thomas Johnson Mill and High School. So truthfully, there is no space on the eastern portion of the county to address those urgent capacity needs. The next on the board's priority is our Brunswick High School. There's been a lot of discussion in the community, but I think that's a good example of where aging infrastructure has been pushed off for many, many years. And we have a need to replace not only Brunswick High School, but the other high schools that are right along with it, Little Town, Walkerville, and Catawckton, that are all building that same general timeframe. It's roughly an 11-year span from when Brunswick was built until the last school. Liberty Elementary is another one that is part of our aging infrastructure portfolio, will also include capacity as part of that project as well. One note, and it's a little bit of a preview for staff's discussion with our board at the end of September, but we do not believe that the $2 million is sufficient for portable classrooms. You will hear nobody in FCPS complain more about portable classrooms. I think to me, they're bad for a lot of reasons. But we're at a point where we need additional investments, and they are not insignificant when it comes to costs. So as an example, we installed a four-unit classroom at Fountain Creek Elementary, which is really targeted to help support our pre-K expansion. The school was able to move their fifth graders out of that portable degree space in the interior of the building. That was a million-dollar project. Part of the other thing that we are doing there, just because I know safety is a part of everyone's mind as well, we've started where possible, in any way, shape, or form, to have a connecting corridor to those portable classrooms, so students can now be dressed out of the building to get to the portable classrooms. So that is a part of our discussion with our board on the 27th, and what that allocation or request should look like for portable classrooms. If you go down to the bottom of that page, you'll see current project status. We have a lot of projects in the works, which is great news for Frederick County. I did want to highlight, I did put an indication of which of those projects were funded through the Build to Learn Act. And that's important, because if you look at the state's allocation for the Build to Learn Act, Frederick County had projects prepared, we had projects in the pipeline, and we have expended our allocation on those projects. The only one not listed there is Waverly Elementary School, because that has already been paid back the county's forward funding on that, which frankly allowed two other projects in the works with Valley and Green Valley to accelerate on that final one. So when Frederick County has allocated construction funds, we have projects in the works, we have things ready to go, and we spend the taxpayer dollars judiciously. If you flip to the next page, we talk about our projected versus actual enrollment. This is a topic of conversation that comes up frequently. But our planning team does an exceptional job of forecasting where our enrollments would be each September the 30th. We do not have a count, obviously, because it is not September 30th. And so for consistency's sake, we always stick to what that enrollment is on September the 30th. So we are projecting 47,661 students, based on current enrollments and what we're seeing trending. We don't see that, we see us obtaining that projected enrollment number, again, based on what we're seeing. But I can't give a physical number until we reach that target date. But if you look at the variance, truly the only outlier is the COVID year, the fall of 2020. We projected that number prior to the start of the pandemic. And then, obviously, families made some different decisions as to what they needed for their students as we entered the fall of 2020. So we saw really a decrease in students to do things like homeschool opportunities and private school opportunities. And then we saw a resurgence of that in fall of 2021. fall of 2021 with our enrollments keeping back up. And then at the bottom of the page, this is an example of three recent projects of ours. From left to right, top to bottom is Brunswick Elementary, which if you haven't been there, again, I think one of our board members mentioned after September 30th, it would be a great opportunity to come visit that phenomenal school. The next one is our Rock Creek School, and then the bottom one is our Blue Heron Elementary School. One other note, I forgot to mention on our enrollment projections, our planning team does a 10-year enrollment projection. And as we look at our numbers out over the 10-year period, our planning team has high confidence in this first five years. And that's really a function of, we can see what's in the pipeline from a development perspective. It's that six to 10-year mark where it gets more difficult to project when developments will start to build out and when developments will start to turn over from just an aging population. We see cyclical trends for developments where maybe finally folks have reached post-child-rearing ages, and they're maybe on the verge of retirement. So they sell and they're backfilled with other families. And so I mention that because also in our education facilities management plan, shows all of the development pipeline throughout the county. There are over 12,000 units that have already been approved throughout the county that are in that pipeline. So we know that they're on the horizon. The question is really where do we target and plug those in? And so it's a balancing act with where can we justify and say we know we will have that growth? And then what does that look like in the out years? Which is why we do an exceptional job of, the planning team does, of really mapping out all the development. And so if I could just give you a couple of examples quickly, and then I'll stop talking and answer questions of, you know, why is it so hard to predict where developments will build out? So just want to give you a couple of examples. In the city and the county, we have the Summers Farm at the end of Butterfly Lane. It's been talked about for well over a decade. It has not begun, they have not started construction, right? And so if 10 years ago, we put that into our enrollment projections in the out years of the 10-year period, that would have been an inaccurate projection. So really have to be careful of that. In the county, we have many examples from DRAs that were signed in the early 2000s of places like the Casey property, County Met property, in the New Market area, the Greater Lake Lingor Project, which has been going on for 30-plus years, right? And so just a couple of examples, Gordon Mill is another one out in the Greater Lake Lingor area and the New Market area. They've been talked about for a long time, but haven't started construction, which is why when you say, are we counting that in the out years? The answer is kind of, right? We are seeing trends in those areas, but you can't point to it and say, I will see Deer Crossing in year nine be exceptionally overcrowded because of Gordon Mill. And Gordon Mill hasn't even broken ground. We know they're coming. That's why they're in that 12,000-unit pipeline. We know it's on.
That's fine. You go ahead, and then I'll, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to pound the table a little bit, because we've, I've had this discussion with Dr. Lebo about how some of those developments, hopefully I'm projecting loud enough here. I can talk louder if I need to. How some of those developments that, and I guess I'll take a little exception, because there were circumstances where particularly Gordon Mill, you know, was kind of held back. That's no longer the case. They've gone through the planning commission this year. They are now moving ahead, much to my chagrin. And unfortunately, when we look at that area, the New Market area, you have Gordon Mill, Calumet, and Casey, and they're all kind of tied together at the hip by bypass. So now that one, and now Calumet are moving forward, they're all starting to move forward. It's real. And we have APFO tests for Deer Crossing Elementary School, Oakdale Middle School, and Oakdale High School, which paint a really scary picture in that part of the county. So when we look at the challenges in the EFMB about how are we going to pay for this when the middle school and the high school component may not really be represented in terms of when we need to build, it's actually much worse. And so that's just part of the challenge. We're still dealing with a major growth coming in the eastern part of the county that we have to figure out, either from funding or through other means. So I just want to pound the table on that one.
Sorry. Want to point out, I don't know if this thing's on or not. I just want to make sure it's heard. So what this doesn't show is it doesn't show how much money the state has contributed towards Green Valley Elementary School and Valley Elementary Frederick County, and every single one of the Frederick County delegation members voted We all voted for that bill. And a lot of that funding went to these two projects. And this graph doesn't show how much money went there, how much has been spent on it, how much was spent wisely or unwisely. We don't know any of that stuff, because that's not, we're not elected school board members. That's not for us to know. Maybe we should know. We didn't know at the time. So, you know, I think the taxpayers at some point are going to want to know how much these projects cost, how much are being spent on them? Is the money being spent wisely? Is the money that the county gets being allocated wisely? What they don't want to see is that, you know, a bunch of money comes in, it gets spent, nobody knows what it was spent on, where it went, and then we need more money. I'm not saying that's the case, but, you know, when you look at this chart, it just says you're not getting any money given for these schools, but you've gotten a lot of money for those schools already.
So you are correct, but this is the FY25 budget document. We do not need additional funds for those projects. And certainly, our Board of Education's approved budget from the last two fiscal years shows where the allocation of that, that's also recognized in the county's budget. The county has to allocate for that as well, which are also approved by the county council. And so I think it's very transparent to the public where those funds, as I mentioned, those funds specifically from the Built to Learn Act were used to fund Waverly Elementary, Brunswick Elementary, Valley Elementary, and Green Valley Elementary. And they funded the state's portion of those projects.
So in my last point that I'm just saying, and I'll delve there, the development in this county is out of control. And at the end of the day, the school board is, cannot be responsible for every decision that's made at county level, at the city level. The 1,200-unit development they're trying to put across the street over here, at some point, people are going to need to be held accountable for the development, for the overbuilding, because everyone else is having to pay for that, whether it's the school board trying to find funding, because you're just mandated to provide and educate. I get it. I get it. So, you know, let's, let's call spade a spade. I'm glad everyone's here. And I know, you know, folks that represent the community have been here a long time. The family's been here a long time. But it's got to get under control. And people are going to have to make some decisions and be willing to stand up and make decisions to get it under control, because it's getting worse and worse. And as Councilmember McCain just pointed out, they don't know how bad it's going to get, because there's a lot of projects that are already approved that we haven't seen yet. You know, you think that nice forest across from your house, it's not going to be there. You know, the projects are already approved. I got 850 homes built right around my house in the Yellow Springs area, 850. They're not all there yet. So these are some of the discussions that I think as a group we should have going forward to take control of the direction of this county. I think it's probably something that we're all on the same page with. We just have to make some decisions. So that's all I got. But Delve there.
Thanks, Chair. So as we know from the public, from reading newspapers, the city is clearly discussing its school mitigation fees, which is currently sitting in an interest-bearing account. Have you been able to look at what kind of financial impact that would have if that money was released? And I noticed that there was only really two projects that would be impacted on your current list if that funding became available. Is there any of these other things at the bottom that aren't schools, specific school related, that could be impacted positively by that funding?
So the quick answer is yes, we've started that examination. I want to say a quick thank you to the alderman in Frederick who invited our staff to come speak before them. I believe it was two weeks ago now. It was a plan for discussion with them. And as part of, we have had a discussion with our board first about how we could potentially utilize that $6 million. One of the things I wanted to point out, though, is while some of these schools, you may think, well, that's not in the city, they have a significant student population who are city residents. And so we don't have a, obviously, everybody knows, a city or a county school system. So all of our schools support all county residents. And so just as a couple of examples, Fountain Creek has city students, Spring Ridge, Yellow Springs. Actually, the majority of resident, excuse me, you know, students enrolled at Yellow Springs are actually city residents. As we see continued growth, as Delvey Pippy mentioned, out in the Yellow Springs area, that number will likely increase because of the growth in the city area. So there are a lot, number of, and Walkerville, yes. There's a chart as part of that presentation that shows where city residents attend a variety of our schools, and it really is widespread. And so you might not think, House President Young's point is well-taken, right? Think, oh, well, Walkerville doesn't have any city residents, but they're all through the 26 interchange, and all, part of our Walkerville view. So that was the first part of your question. I followed up and missed the second one today.
Would it, so it would just go into a general pot, then? Would then be redistributed amongst all?
Well, and that's, that's a piece that we have to present to them for potential approval. What we heard loud and clear was they would like an opportunity to have a discussion of if we gave this pot of money either in whole or in parts, how can we make sure that we are able to continue moving projects forward? So if as part of our discussion with the county, we would say, school X is, we can't get to move past fiscal year 26. But if the city contributed $3 million, we could start that in fiscal year 25. So that's what our staff heard from the alderman of that kind of detailed information, because you're right, $6 million isn't a lot of money as it relates to a school construction project. But $6 million absolutely could keep either a project on a particular timeline, or it could potentially accelerate it, because it could provide seed money for design or the first year of site work. So we're excited about that opportunity to come back to our board and then also to the board.
Just for, just for perspective for everyone, could you share with them what the final number was for Brunswick Elementary School?
In two seconds, and I will give you the exact, exactly. Close to $50 million. As we look at Yellow Springs, and I, we just had that discussion this morning among our team, Yellow Springs, based on a revised budget estimates, would be closer to $54 million for an elementary school.
Councilmember McCain.
Just going back to the comments from Mr. Pippy, Senator Pitt, okay. Chair projecting, nobody heard me.
Fair remarks, word, aren't they?
I just want to talk about specifically about Green Valley Elementary School. I just want to thank all the work the delegation did. Green Valley Elementary School is one of the oldest and open, horrible plan for schools. I live right behind it. My kids went through there. It's, what would be 150, 160% state rated? 170%. That's the problem that that new elementary school is coming to fix. So I, we really, in that community, really do appreciate the additional funding that allowed those two elementary schools to go off on the timeline, because it is desperately needed over there. It's, you can't imagine how bad it is. And frankly, it's not soon enough. You know, waiting for 25 is just not soon enough, but it's better than nothing.
So I just wanted to add in there to pause numbers that you said of $50 million for Brunswick and $54 million. That's without any land, because we already had the land in those counties. You add on having to acquire land, it's even more. So Brunswick was for you.
Dr. Lebo, I just want to, I just have a comment. And I know you and I have gone back and forth, and we've had our good little healthy banter about some numbers. But I do appreciate all the work that junior team put into this and the numbers. And these decisions aren't easy. And I am looking at someone that recognizes that the growth is reversing at the seams. I don't know how we're going to keep pace with the growth that Frederick County's seeing, with the projected deficits that the state is going to be seeing in the out years. And this is, if you haven't heard this, everybody needs to pay attention, because it's coming. So I appreciate what you and your team does and the hard decisions they make. And I look forward to continuing that dialogue, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And so, and it's not easy. And I know it's, you get a lot of jabs, but I want to just say thank you for all the good feedback.
I would just, I'm going to just piggytail onto that, because as Councilmember McCain, as we both serve on the IAA committee together, we're just finalizing the report on school construction audit, which is going to be pretty favorable to like how judicious Frederick County is with its money. And I know in the IAC annual report, this has come out, Frederick County is the highest rated in terms of maintenance efficiency across the state. So, you know, we cannot let those accolades go unrecognized, because I think they're trying to put all the fingers in the dikes to keep us from falling apart. But we're headed in a terrible trajectory. So I don't have an answer, which is why I'm glad this is a nice council sitting here. Hopefully, we can come up with some collaborative solutions. I heard somebody say the M-word of moratorium on building for the welfare of our families, because even right now with the redistricting proposal for Presswood, that's just one. If you look at our construction list coming up forward, it's like every other one involves another redistricting. And with, given that all the things that our families have gone through in our community, adding a potential redistricting, like basically every other year for the next, you know, six or seven years, is that, how is that going to impact the mental health of our school community members? And I want to just make sure everyone recognizes our board member Lieberman, who ran on a platform of mental health concerns for our students. And that's real. That's what's coming from our students themselves, and we can't neglect their voices. So thank you.
My last comment feels good. These are just good comments here. So we'll keep the good feelings going. On the bus thing, I do have a lot of legislation related to electric buses. I'm assuming that Bus Depot is, it's not for electric buses, is it? Okay. And I'm telling you why. Those buses are between $500 and $1 million apiece, a piece. So I know there's a pilot program going on, but I don't know how many buses we have in Frederick. But you multiply that times a million, let's say there were permanent funding and other stuff. Thank you.
450 buses that we had.
Times a million.
And if you have not made a trip to our existing Bus Depot, you're more than welcome at any time. Please come on out. That's where this is.
I mentioned to Chair Pippy that there are at least buses across the schools. Like you go to, Valley Elementary has a dozen buses. Brunswick Middle, any given day, has like a dozen or 15 buses there. They just become part of the landscape. You see buses being stored at our school.
Want some to my house, I'd be like, money, brother.
Well, we heard from our colleagues across the state, as we know, we got a term that they don't work with consistency. I mean, people invest in the fleet, and they are cost prohibitive. So there's a lot of people who have, who could say they own electric buses, but I don't know how many are actually in rotation use.
We have a team, one is not in operation, and it needs to be serviced in Annapolis. And we couldn't get in there, because the problem is it wouldn't charge. So we have to tell it to Annapolis to give.
Andrew, you write that down.
That's good.
And I just want, I just want to do a little quick crosswalks, and Dr. Lebo and I collaborate as it goes back to blueprint and capital funding. There is no capital funding with blueprint. And as you heard, we talk about pre-K. All of our school buildings, besides the newer ones, were not built to accommodate pre-K. Educational specs that designed, that lead to the architectural design were designed, probably apt day kindergarten, right? Apt day kindergarten, right? So four sections of kindergarten and two classrooms over the course of the day. And so we've now actually had to, so go to the portals, right? So we have to, we have to push these floors in time. We sometimes have to retrofit things when they're in our high schools. I mean, they have to get little toilets and little sinks. And so we have to do a significant amount of capital work. So we also, we have some innovation. We've been applauded for those innovations, having pre-K expansion in our high schools and other places. But we're running out of place to put them, and we need, capital funding has to take care of that. That's just another consideration. It was an unfunded expansion, and from a capital perspective.
Yeah, I mean, so, Delve and Pippy, you challenged us, we have to figure out how we're going to address these growth issues. And President Johnson, you used the M-word, horrifying. You know, we've got, Dr. Lebo started us off with this, basically, in my view, we've got this nexus challenge where we've got, you know, the need to replace our aging facilities, and we're also trying to improve. And, you know, you can't dial back clock on aging infrastructure. And, you know, you can't dial back clock on aging infrastructure, you can try with modernization, it only takes you so far, we put so much of those projects off for so long because of growth, that we just have to be thinking about, and I am thinking about it, we're going to be thinking about it, you know, what can we do in the area of for a token? I'm way out ahead of our attorneys right now, so bear with me on that, but I've had enough discussions, that I think we can, we can have that discussion. It's going to be challenging, it's going to be controversial, but even if we can slow down growth in targeted areas, because the schools are overcrowded for a year or two, to buy us some time to budget for how, you know, improve the problem, we have to be thinking about that in the building.
Who's enough to be here to think about?
That's exactly what my team is.
House for Brad. It's time, it's time.
Senator Lewis Young? So, I'll offer an alternative to the M-word, and this may be an oversimplification, but local government concentrates mainly on where we grow and how we grow, deals with other issues, but that is largely the function of local government. At the state level, we deal with all the policies to try to support that growth, education funding, healthcare funding, transportation funding, energy funding, et cetera. So, you're not going to be able to answer this today, but give some thought to, how could we put, and is it necessary, and how could we put state-level policy into effect that would limit growth without supportive infrastructure in place or concurrent to that development? I know we do in some areas, but I really think some of those policies need to be relooked and come into the 21st century, and we're doing all those functions in silos. We deal with energy and environment here, and education here, and transit there, needs to be more of a holistic approach. And it's, it's a big conversation, but that may be an alternative path, a long-term path, actually.
So, we know we could go down a bike hole with this.
Yeah, that's why I said, it's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, so we're already discussing about potential ways to kind of keep moving us forward.
So the, the next item that we talked about, it's not really overly descriptive, but we just wanted to have the opportunity for every member of the delegation, if there are some legislative items they're working on, I know Senator Lewis Young had mentioned a couple of issues he was working on, we were going to hear more about those. But if there's stuff that you're working on for the good of the order that you want to bring up now, or if there's some policy discussion that you want to bring up as it pertains to either what we do, or the school board does, I know I have a couple of things that I want to bring up, but I'm not going to go first, so Delegate Fair, do you have anything you want to, it's our time.
Yeah. No, I'm okay.
Okay. Delegate Kerr, you've been awfully quiet.
The intention, listening, nothing to add.
How's the deck? Deck is good?
Yeah. Looking on my deck.
Okay.
Just focus learning, finding out what it is, succeed, and how we can support.
Senator, anything else for the board?
You've heard about two of my major bills, but I will also say it's time to relook the topic of student board of ad voting rights. Our young people should be able to have a say in the policies that affect their education. Possibly it might be limited to certain topics, but at the state level, the student board of ad member has voting rights, and I strongly believe that that should be policy throughout the state. So, that's a heads up.
So in recent months, my office has been contacted in regards to, and I don't, I'm going to just throw this out there and see who, see what sticks, who can, who can answer this for me. But, when we're looking at like Rock Creek Elementary, the new development of that area for the special needs children that we have in our community, we have children that are in these special needs programs, they go through, they reach the age, do they, do they max out at an age to graduate as an automatic at 18?
21.
21. Have, have, thank you. Have we looked or considered, because we understand the developmental processes, and I hear people talking about, you know, that the average person, I mean, heaven sakes, they're putting bills in that kids or people shouldn't be responsible for their actual silver at 25, that don't have developmental issues. Have, have we looked at in Frederick County, any potential to span that number from 21 to like 23, 24? And the reason I ask is because I've been asked by more than one family in recent months, who says that their child was basically, they were grateful for the programs, that their children were there, but then they aged out, and there was no real curriculum that required them to have certain life skills, or to be partnered with, like they, they were going to leave the school because of their age, not because they had to paint any type of real special skill set. Is, is there any, is there any consideration for future movement that we partner with pro, you know, with businesses?
Yeah, so that's federal law, that's under IDU. So, we ourselves can't do that, but we do have a partnership with FCC, so maybe we need to do a better job advertising our partnership with FCC, but we do, we are under federal mandate to go to age 20.
But we can't, we can't locally change the age of eligibility, it ends at age 21.
Because that's where the funding, that's where the funding stops.
It's part of federal law, but the funding would be part of it, but then also, there is no, there is no law or infrastructure to continue to provide those students with IEP. So, in the last three years, I actually started my career working with students who were from 18 to 21, is part of their IEP has to include what they call transition planning. So actually, if someone's had an outlier experience, they're saying they did, they should not be leaving at 21 without a post-public school plan, and some of them get involved with doors, and some other opportunities, and so, we don't locally have the ability to.
And that's fine, I mean, if there's, whoever I can speak with about that in further detail, I don't need to take up the group's time, I just thought that was an interesting.
They should be getting transition services, if they successfully transitioned into a group home structure, or a Department of Rebuilding Services structure.
That's cute, so that's fine, I appreciate that, because that kind of goes into my next question, which can wait for that discussion, but that works, so thank you.
We'll come at you.
Thank you.
So, one thing that's been in the news lately, that it's kind of, I got some emails about, is pertaining to cameras in the classroom. You know, we, there was some legislation this, earlier this year, to address that issue as a pilot program. A good friend of mine, colleague of mine, has a child, is in a similar program, and I think he was one of the sponsors, the first sponsor of the legislation, but this might be something that delegation members are going to weigh in on. I mean, ultimately, you know, it's a school board decision, at least now, but, you know, I think the public is weighing in on it. I think the fact that we had that report from the Department of Justice, you know, related to practices that apparently still existed in Frederick County, so, you know, I'm kind of interested to see what the board's going to do with that, you know, and the delegation may, may see something about it as well. But, you know, we're kind of all in this together, you know, and, you know, what goes on with education, there's a lot of legislation that comes out of Annapolis pertaining to, pertaining to that issue. So, you know, the, the county citizens expect us to do things related to these issues as well.
So I'll just chime in on that, Senator Delegate Pippy, I think that we do have the interest of the board for the cameras, we are, the school system's part of collective bargaining, so whenever you change working conditions, it has to be negotiated. And so, for us, right now, to start a pilot, we need the four adults in the room to agree. So what the union said was, if on a voluntary basis, our unit member agrees, then we're fine with it. So we have to find the agreement. So for one classroom pilot, we need all four adults to agree, and we need every parent in that classroom to agree to have their, their children's likeness, and we do this at a station every year in general, where parents have to sign off, give us permission, and we can use their child's likeness, if they want to be a part of the director. So, this is a different case, because we're asking for classroom, cameras in one particular classroom as a pilot. So we need all of that level of agreeing. What we agreed to at the last board meeting was to figure out how we can do that, because right now, I don't have the standing to move teachers just to get four teachers who are real, three par educators, or SEIA's, and a teacher. I don't have the leverage, the leeway to move them all to the same classroom, and at the same time, we need to survey parents, to make sure that is something that they're interested in, and then if they are, if they will agree to have their kids in one classroom, so that we can issue that pilot. So I do think you'd have the board's support. It's, it's the other side, and we have some teachers supporting, and some we don't. We have to figure out how to get that support in one classroom, and get those parents to.
So, I would just say that, you know, I read, unfortunately, I don't read about it, but the parents weren't polled, so you polled the teachers, send a poll out to the parents.
We are, we are, and we're coming back, yes, we're coming back to the board with that information, we are.
But we need to get the adults too, we have to have all on board.
Parents.
And the adults. So, but I, just the mortar count, please follow up with me on that, because that's something that we're looking at.
Delegate Pippy, if I can say, one of the things with the state bill, if there was funding attached to that, that might help the, the local school system to agree to it more.
You know, I don't want to get a little worked up here, but you know, they made every police officer in the state wear a body cam. You know, I bet you if I could find position statements from a lot of local and elected officials in this area that supported that, we have cameras on buses, look, we have a documented report of incidents in our county, so it's not like we're suspecting things are going on, it was documented, so I think it's, I mean, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but.
We signed, we supported the bill, the board.
So you'd be supportive of a measure?
We have to get the guess. The board wrote a letter of support to the last set of legislation, I think that our, yeah, I mean, we have board members intensely interested in having cameras in our country.
I was thinking about the, the letter that we voted unanimously, this was early 2022, but we voted unanimously as a board to support, I think at the time it was House Bill 226, and based on discussion at our last board meeting, I, we didn't take a formal vote, but there was verbal support, I think from all seven board members toward this bill, or towards this idea once again.
I think from a legislative perspective, my recollection though, is that some of the state, the Maryland Association of School Boards of Ad, I think did not support the legislation.
Really?
No funding, no funding.
Yeah, and neither, and just so I do, you know, sort of, that's a continued area of sort of advocacy and, and conversation, right? I think the letter of support locally only went so far, because all of the states supported it, and MAVE itself said that they did not support.
I, I wanted to see though, or was it that MAVE had remained neutral on the bill? I'm not certain that they came out against it, I believe MAVE may have been, may have been neutral.
Well, I just think one thing to think about though, that we did here, as, as, I also have the portion of being the chief over HR and inclusive labor relations, is the notion of, one of the things that the, the recent audit found about Frederick County that was an asset, was the degree to which we provided inclusive services. And so because of that, there are very few students who sort of spend their day contained within a classroom, and so it's just something to think about, which is, you know, the idea of, I will say that many of our bargaining units, they do not like differential treatment by job position or type, and so the idea would be if we're interested in cameras, that it is across the board in all ways and manners, versus just a particular type of teacher, or a particular classroom, because also people move around and things change, so just something to consider.
Yeah, MAVE did, it didn't leave a close.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Levo. So Brad and my papers.
So, the last thing, as we kind of briefly talked about having another meeting, I mean, I don't know if we're going to have another, I mean, obviously it's up for the, for the delegation, but I don't know if we're having another one-on-one meeting. I mean, we have a meeting likely in December, and there's a whole bunch of other meetings that we have, doesn't preclude anyone from reaching out and attending meetings and talking to you guys every day if they want, but what is everyone's thoughts on that?
I think we've accurately reflected what our needs are from a high level, I think we've given you supporting document, I think, or supporting documentation regarding the request for where we're at with the Department of Justice settlement, the additional enhancements and expansions of our special education services, which continues to be another, you know, financial pressure for us to help meet the needs of our students. We certainly thank you for your time, and, but I do feel like it is accurately, what we discussed today accurately reflects the direction that the board is heading in, and the direction that FCS is heading in, and we obviously have a couple of big, big challenges, especially around our growth.
Can I just add one thing? And this is maybe the idea of a later meeting, but I'm, I'm fine with whatever, because we can always contact you, is you'll put in a lot of legislation that may not have occurred to any of you at this point, if it's in the area of public schools, talk to us about it. A lot of times, maybe if you tweak, it'll be acceptable and it'll pass. There may be some small thing, or maybe we have some information, or somebody in the school system, Dr. Dyson can direct you, who might be able to really give you the information, because when I looked at a lot of the bills that were proposed, I think we could be helpful.
We, I mean, we appreciate, we talked about the bus examples, I'm going to be, I'm going to be using that. So no, I mean, look, we don't, we're generalists, I mean, I know some of the members have experience in other areas, but at the end of the day, we kind of rely on our colleagues and cohorts in the county to provide expertise and to help us with legislation, and to give us on-the-ground feedback about what's working and what's not, so I hope we can continue that before. And obviously, you can reach out to us anytime, we're always there, and we all are invested in Frederick County.
Yes.
We want Frederick County to be successful, so it's good to.
It's all right, I just wanted to say, overall, thank you very much, really appreciate, appreciate having everybody here. I think it's so important, because we're all in this together in this county, but what I, what I would say is, I think it's really important with Delegate Pippy and what Senator Lewis Young have said, is, it's important to me, because I think I've been in everybody's office, both prior to my service here and during my service, if you could point out those delegates and those senators, when these bills come up, that it would be important for us to go to them and share our perspective, because I think it's important when you look at this chart, to share perspective, that many of these counties here are in a similar spot to where we were 10 years ago. So they may well too benefit from increased funding due to growth, so that then we can go to them and share our, our experience, the, the bad part of our experience right now, where it's placed us, so they will be supportive of bills that come forward to supply, whatever it is, some sort of emergency funding for growth areas, because I think like Senator Lewis Young said, it's important that we get them on board, we, we need their votes. It, it's important to point out to them that we're not taking money away from them, that we're looking forward, that if, you know, over on the eastern shore, Queen Anne's, or somewhere like that, all of a sudden explodes, you're talking about a very small school district that could not withstand very much growth. If that happened very quickly, they'd be a perfect example of a county that would benefit from an injection of funding when necessary, if we fit our state in a position to do that. So I think it's important for you all to share with us, hey, here's, here's a delegate that would be important for you all to go talk to and share our experiences, and that way, we're, we're active, because like, like Delegate Pippy's kept pointing out, we're preaching to the choir when we come to see you all now, everybody understands. So it's important that we get in front of those delegates and those senators, that are going to be important votes when issues like this come up. So I, I appreciate how, how open everyone's been to my visits when I come to Annapolis, and everyone on the, on the Board of Education is vouch to advocate on behalf of this county with your help, so thank you very much.
And since my time on the board... And since my time on the board, this is the first time I've been in a room that basically has representation from all aspects of our county and state government, like that represent Frederick County as a whole. And I think that this is, I guess it's not historic, I mean, it's not traditional, but just seeing that we're all sitting here as elected representatives of our community. And so I'd like to see how we can continue to grow a collaboration, because we're all here to serve the same people. So it's just our community. So I know today's lens was on education, but we want to see the county be great for our students after they graduate. So we're really here for the same reasons. So I don't know how we can take this, you know, and leverage it and turn it into some more momentum. But I do want to just go all the way and we thank everybody for their time and energy today. Because I can't think of any time, maybe you all can, I can't think of any time where we've had.
We did, early on, when the previous county executives first term, and then the county council, and MAEVE would be periodically. But as far as a group like this, it's usually the delegation meeting in December.
But let's bust the silos and just like try to work forward to work together for the same people. We're all doing it for the same people. You want to go there?